But I can tell you about it if we need to. We can wait for now.
All right. It is 7:04. We apologize for the late start, but we had some technical difficulties. I'm calling to order the regular business meeting of the New Market School Board. As we always begin meetings with the pledge of allegiance, Catherine, if you could lead us in that, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just so the public is aware, we just were at a non-public meeting that we'll address at the end of this meeting, dealing with some personnel matters, a leave request and a teacher nomination. Since our last meeting, the board has been pretty busy. Last week, we had a joint meeting with the town council. It was great to spend time with the council fostering communication and cooperation as we reviewed the town and school shared services initiatives that have taken place since our last joint meeting last year. It was a very positive meeting for all, and it was obvious that the town had already benefited in many ways from the efforts of Superintendent NATO, the town administrator, town and school employees, and both boards. And it was great to see everyone working together in that way. On Tuesday, two nights ago, the board gathered with Meredith for our school board retreat. The goal of the evening was for us to review the past year in the schools with Superintendent NATO and to start the process of developing goals for the board for the coming year. And we're in the process of fleshing out those goals, and we'll be sharing them with everyone in our next meeting on September 21st. If the board will oblige me, I'd like to make some modifications to our agenda. We have some visitors in the audience. I'd like to allow them to speak and address their issues prior to proceeding with the rest of our meeting. Is that, I mean, amongst all of you?
Yes.
All right, so the first group I'd like to bring up, if they'd like, is the New Market PTA. You guys can come to the mic if you would like, or, and Meredith, if you would like to address it. Or Heather, would you like to introduce yourself and sort of talk about the donation that you're bringing before us?
Sure, I'm Heather Rabb, and I'm the president of PTA.
I'm Emily Stern, and I'm the library media specialist at the elementary school.
Welcome.
Hi. So in the spring, we did a big clean-out of the library. We weeded out a lot of older copies of classics and things that were, you know, damaged or just really old and undesirable to the students at this point. And we're looking to donate money to replace classics, popular books like Harry Potter, Dr. Seuss, things, Madeline.
Yeah, things like that that kind of go above and beyond the regular budget.
Excellent.
So pursuant to policy, the board needs to accept any donation above $500. The Parents Association has indicated that they would like to gift up to $2,000 for the replacement of library books at the elementary school.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you for that motion.
A second.
An motion from Mr. Kennison and a second from Ms. Oliver to accept the donation up to $2,000 from the PTA. Is there any discussion?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you first, well, we have to vote on it, but thank you first for cleaning up the books for us and weeding them out and then offering to purchase new ones. If no one else has anything to say, let's vote to approve this motion. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
It's accepted. Thank you very much for that donation.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
The next item we're going to talk about is under our discussion items, and it is, we have Amy Gidonday, I think I did well with that, I don't know, from the rec department to sort of talk about that and give a presentation on that before we, for that item of discussion.
Okay. Lana, the documentation is from 1974.
And as Amy begins, let me just be clear, we're not asking the board to vote tonight. We wanted to give you the information tonight and try to, between us, research any questions that you might have. So we wanted to just bring this forward tonight.
Okay, just to kind of give you some history, the town, back in August, I submitted a letter of intent to the department, New Hampshire Department of Natural Cultural Resources, to apply for an LWCF grant, the Land and Water Conservation Fund, for a 50% match to fund at 150, their match would be $150,000, to fund a splash pad at Leo Landra Field. And while in the conversation, they did come out and do a site tour. The land at one point was encumbered in 1974 through LWCF. And through the conversation, it came to terms that we no longer, that joint agreement between the town and the school district, because the school district owns the land, that lapsed and was never renewed. So in order for me to pursue the town, to pursue the LWCF funding, they need to know that the school district will basically go in, enter another joint agreement, allowing the town to take, it needs to be a legal agreement, similar to the one in 1974. And I have some copies of it. Fortunately, I ran out of legal paper, but if anyone wanted to see what originally it was. And it's basically giving the town legal control over that, knowing that it's LWC property. We're going to take all the responsibilities of it being in an encumbered piece of land and what we're doing for public recreation. And so that's really what I'm here is to, in order for them to send out an invitation for me to apply, I need, they need to know that the school is willing to enter this joint agreement in some sort of a in-good-faith letter or an MOU. I actually had something kind of mocked up, and I forgot it, but I left it in the printer. But I would be willing to give you that type of letter. This is how it needs to be worded. And again, this isn't the legal document. This is just saying, yes, if the town has awarded the funds and they accept the funds, the school would enter this joint agreement again and become LWCF encumbered.
So the original joint agreement was from 1975?
Yeah, 1975, I believe, yeah.
And it expired in 1990. It was a 15-year term. And apparently, no one had returned to visit it or ask about it in that time period. So as this came up, you know, I think both parties have in some ways operated under the assumption that it's somewhat shared space and there's a cooperative arrangement between town and school with respect to the field. But there is no formal agreement in place, which would be required for the Recreation Department to move forward with this grant. So Amy can maybe leave us a copy. I can send that along to the board.
Obviously, it was, here's, I have.
Perfect.
There's a few areas where it obviously needed to be changed. Look at it, some of the terminology of selectmen and recreation board, that's no longer correct. There's a part under here where that when it went into a joint agreement before, the school actually matched half of it and the town half, matched half. We would be doing the whole match, the town would. You guys don't have that responsibility. Then the bottom under liability insurance, number six, if you're looking at that, the town would be covering the whole liability of the project.
For the splash pad?
For the project, yes, it is.
Do you have, do you have like the plans, a draft plan of the splash pad location and what that might look like, a mock-up of that that the board could look at as well?
Not as of yet. I mean, as going into that, that would be a design feature and so forth. And unless the LWCF actually says, hey, you're invited, apparently got 28 applications around the state, so it's a very competitive year. Once they get a letter from the school district saying, yes, we know, we understand, we own the land, but we're willing to send that joint agreement if they get, if we get funded, then I would start that process.
What are, what are the timeframes of everything?
In October, they send out the applications to the, they invite people to apply. Then it goes through probably Feb, all the way to February. They, they're giving us the information. We would be submitting something in February. Then it kind of goes through this whole federal legal, and somewhere in October, we might be awarded. So I'm kind of looking through a year-long process. But my first hurdle is just getting the school to go into another joint agreement.
So if the board votes on, or at its next meeting on September 21st, that puts you in time to get the information back to the LWCF?
What I can do is let Dred know that you are going to be voting this on September 21st. And then they would need something that even just says, hey, and again, I'll send that to you, Meredith. And they know, okay, we're worth, worth sending us an invitation because they're giving, they might not invite somebody else. And then if you guys weren't going to do that, we missed, somebody else missed out.
And if you could share that stuff with Meredith, and then she can share it with us. We can put it on the agenda for the 21st and proceed that way.
Okay, and again, this doesn't have to be the legal one. This is just a.
Right.
Saying that we will enter into a legal agreement.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, and that's really it. The only other thing that I feel, that normally LWCF, the old rules is it lapsed. Anything we enter into now wouldn't lapse. Perpetuity would stick around with the new LWC rules.
Does anyone from the board have any questions for you? Amy, thank you, Meredith.
All right, great. Thank you. If you have any questions, Amy at the rec. I have to pronounce my last name.
Give me a pause. Mike, again.
Thank you, Amy.
All right, the next item that we're going to go to is a presentation from Assistant Superintendent Andruski and some of the teachers from the schools regarding the summer programs and professional development updates. We'll just allow them to get their technology together. We'll begin that.
Chris, it did not go through.
No, it didn't go through.
The bile exceeded.
Christina has volunteered to act it out.
Wow.
Three weeks, sorry.
Interpreted Dan.
Interpreted Dan. From first to third graders.
Okay, so thank you for having me tonight. As you can see, our slide tonight, discussions, some of the summer activities and programs that had, went on this summer. Now, here's a phrase from Bill Belichick, which is appropriate for tonight, no days off.
Is there a game tonight?
There might be a little bit of a game tonight. So that was my little play on Bill Belichick. But no days off is what he said after they won the championship last year. And talked about.
I'm unaware.
And he talked about, you know, getting right back on the board. And our teachers and our staff and our kids did that this summer. It was highlighted in a lot of different programs that happened. The first step, we'll talk about, this was our students, and we ran a Title I summer camp this year. We were able to use grant money, so this did not come out of any of our operating budget. Meredith and I submitted a grant to talk about giving kids services over the summer. And so money got reallocated. It was a competitive grant, and we got money. And we were fortunate enough to hire Anna and Christina to run a program for 11 students that qualified for Title I services throughout the year, the previous school year. And so that's 11, and we serviced 30 kids over the years. So one-third of the kids took advantage of it because it was offered to all kids. But one-third took advantage of the services that Christina and Anna put together. Ran for three weeks. It was students entering grades one through three, and it ran each day from 9:00 to 12:00. And they sat down for four days and planned out this program with just a little bit of input from Meredith and I. It was fabulous. I did a survey at the end. Eight parents responded. Seven of the eight said fantastic service. Love what you did. Love the hands-on activities. They're going to highlight what they did because it was really a different approach to education. We thought outside the box. We didn't just hammer math and reading and science and social studies by doing packing work or seated work. We did it through hands-on experience, which is that experiential learning, that project-based learning, and they really did a fantastic job with it. It was highlighted by students presenting what they did for three weeks. And these are students, grades one through three, presenting to adults in a very professional manner about what they learned. Christina, Anna, Turner, will you talk more about it?
So I'm Anna Davenport. This is Christina Napolitano. I had been looking for a way to get involved with summer programs for a while. So when Chris came to our meeting and presented that he and Meredith had created something kind of different, I was completely on board. Obviously, the purpose of a summer program, you know, we have the student slide back over the summer. And one of the major goals is to prevent that, that slide. But a lot of the research lately is also talking about, and I think this was part of the research that they did, about how important exposure and discussion and early language is to overall learning and building curiosity. So where your typical summer program might involve a lot of drilling and stuff that you would do in school, this was an opportunity to prevent kids who are at risk and who may not get enough language exposure to all these different experiences. It was exploratory. They just, we did a lot of talking.
We were, we weren't in a classroom. Maybe out of the 15 days, we were maybe in there for three, four days.
Yes. We were able to incorporate math and reading and all of that stuff without it being very official. So we would just, for example, we would come in and we would typically do a read aloud in the morning, which we would project, and so the kids could follow along. But that was pretty much after that. We would be out the door. So, and to say that we did it without a lot of help is really kind of silly because Chris had already hooked us up with Justin Kane and the UNH docents. But some of the things that we did, oh, we also were given a theme of New Market. Kind of felt a little bit like we were on Sesame Street because we got to know everybody in town. It was like, who are the people in your neighborhood? We met the, we met the mailman. We went everywhere. So we did, we sat down and we said, let's kind of go in order of history. So let's start with the Native Americans. So we had our first week, the theme was kind of, we made edible fires. We dug in the clay. We made pottery. We made fishing weirs. Then the second week, we kind of moved on to colonial days. We learned about gundelos. We actually made boats and we made butter.
We made butter and made boats.
Yep.
Sailed the gundelo boats.
We sailed gundelos. And then the third week was sort of New Market today. So we took a tour of the post office. We had the PD come to see us.
It was wonderful because.
It was fantastic.
It was a rainy day.
Yes.
And we couldn't do our walking field trip that day, and they came to us.
They came to us. We went to the Historical Society. They cut up watermelon for us. It was the hottest, the hottest day of the summer that we decided to walk for two miles. They didn't whine at all.
No, they were great.
It was just a lot of good fun where we were talking along the way. They were processing what they were learning, developing this background knowledge. And as third grade, I mean, our first theme unit in third grade is actually New Market. So for the kids who are going into third grade, it was a great background knowledge that's going to put them right on target. And then usually when we would come back, we would play some games. So we did some remediation that way through math games, reading games. And it was great because Christina's experience is with the younger grades and mine is with the older. So we were kind of able to split them, which is great because she was able to lead me in areas where I, you know, may not have as much experience.
And vice versa.
The kids did really well. We had them trying things like kale chips, and we had them writing about it. And then they culminated by creating their own displays for the last day, which we invited the parents to, which was basically Christina had taken photos the whole way along. She created a video display, which she has, had cut down to five minutes, but apparently it wasn't short enough. Just showing them, like, we made, we made a mess. We were in the clay. We were, I mean, we just, yeah, they.
We had Nancy Miller one, too.
Oh, we dug in the worms with Nancy Miller. We learned about composting.
Exactly, worms.
Yes.
We made our own salad.
Yeah, I felt like it was kind of like homeschooling. I mean, the way that we had, we had few enough children and enough financial resources that we could plan to have a field trip every day if we wanted, or to have someone come in to do something with us. We had the docents come in and bring starfish, jellyfish. The kids got to touch them. It really was, it was great. And actually, Mr. Thayer, who taught science here for a long time, was one of the UNH docents. So it was fabulous for him to come in and be with the kids. So what did you?
No, I think, I think it was a great program for those kids who just needed a little bit more reading and math. And it just, especially with those little kiddos who don't want to sit there and do worksheets, you know, on a hot summer day. And we had them out walking, and we met Tom, the postman, and he was talking about all the houses from Main Street that he does and how many stops that he has.
He showed them his little package scanner.
And so we were sitting there doing numbers and letters, you know, through talking to Tom, who was bombarded by us and these 11, 12 children. He had no rea, he couldn't say no. He was kind of forced to talk to us. But it was a good experience for, especially those little kiddos who got math and got reading in a non, you know, traditional classroom way. And I think it worked.
And as a teacher who's at third grade, it's been great this fall to get the shy little taps on the shoulder and the waves and the not-so-shy hugs. And I feel like you get an idea for the community, you know, I'm watching these kids come up. I know where they are. I know who they are. I know a little bit about them, which is going to make things a little bit easier in the future. So I thought it was great. We had a lot of fun.
It was a good mix of kids, too, because it was, it was one through three. And they were so, it was, you know, they were so good with each other. The older kids were helping the younger kids. The younger kids were looking up to the older kids. And we did, obviously, when we broke off into our groups, did, you know, age-appropriate things. But it was, it was nice to see them work together and.
And I have to say that having Meredith and Chris, like, we're very lucky to have administrators that are invested personally in the community and willing to go into the trenches with us and.
Literally, the.
Have the kid conversations.
Clay pit.
In the actual trenches and to have Chris, who had said, I've already made a contact with you for this person. So just give them a call and they'll, and they'll show up. It made our job really pretty easy because we sat down with a calendar and we said, okay, we've got this many experiences that we can have. Let's organize them into some sort of theme and let's plug them in. And when we came in, you know, it was just three weeks of field trips, and it was kind of fun. And the kids kind of knew something cool was going to happen every day. And they, they really liked it, you know, just like going to rec camp or whatever. It felt like a camper or something more than, more than summer school. So.
Well, it's amazing just hearing the passion and seeing how animated you guys are about this. It's inspirational for me sitting here, seeing it. So thank you to all four of you for creating this program for these special 11 students. And I know that the families are grateful. Chris said seven out of eight responded. You know, my simple mind, if there was money, I would want everyone to have these experiences maybe someday. But I am grateful that you guys were able to organize this kind of program because it sounds like you and the children both benefited from it. So thank you for the dedication there, and thank you for your hard work with it.
And we hope next year, all 30 might take advantage or more.
It really was. I truly enjoyed working.
And they heard it. Like, they heard everything that we said, which is, you know, as a teacher, that's not always the case. But I think the way that the activities were presented, they remembered some of the most.
Exactly.
You know, they knew the word gundelo. They knew these specific words.
Snares.
And yes, and they were willing to put themselves out there and guess. And so that was really cool. The discussions we had were, were very cool.
And I think the last day wrap-up that we did, like, Chris kind of said, well, how about if we do this kind of a presentation at the end? And we got big poster boards, and every day for the last, I would say, like, week and a half or so, we were like, okay, well, let's take what we did and we'll add it on.
And they did it. They created their own displays. We gave them their photos, and we gave them foam letters and stuff. And then they just kind of, and it was fish prints from the docents and, you know, pictures of them inside, you know, digging clay.
With my foot stuck in the clay. Pictures of them trying kale chips with this, you know, eh, face on. So, and their writing samples, you know, everything they wrote about, about what they liked about this experience.
We would love to see the video if you guys could.
Yeah, I apologize. It's really, it's really cute. Yes, I certainly will.
So it just sounds, so these are kids that might have just struggled a little bit more?
Just needed a little bit more reading and math. They're all Title I.
So it was encouragement, and it sounds like that they're going to go in with more confidence for this next coming year.
And curiosity, and the slide back will have hopefully been prevented.
Well, and it puts them ahead, too, right? Maybe they have a few more tidbits in their head and they can actually raise their hand. So encouragement of learning, which is so important, I think. And we'll be looking at the data of these students who participated in the summer program to see if it did help prevent some regression or sort of how they are compared to where they were at the end of the school year to see where they come in. You know, the one question I would, I would throw out is, how do you see some of those experiences that you had the opportunity to engage in this summer being carried over into school year kinds of activities and with students?
I think for third grade, it works out super well for you.
You know, obviously, if wishes were fishes, you know, we would be able to have the freedom to and the, and the, you know, opportunities to create these field trips all the time. I mean, it's when you have a grade level that has 80 or 100 kids, it's a very different thing than saying you can go. You know, but we had a lot of people volunteering, you know.
Nancy Miller one, too.
The historic, you know, there were people that didn't even, you know, they didn't take, like, the Historical Society kept up. And I will definitely be trying to get the third grade on a field trip this fall as well. Now that they've experienced it, they may not know what's hit them. Because we'll have to do that four days in a row to get four classes. And it would be 20 each time. But they were, you know, they were willing to work with us. They had our watermelon cut up. I mean, we had a lot of, it was really Sesame Street. It was, people saw us coming. And at the post office, they took us to the back and we saw, we found our address of the school.
Elementary school.
And we had made, we had made postcards and addressed them. And so we mailed our own postcards, and we looked at the in-town versus out-of-town. They stamped their own mail.
So for a five and, you know, six-year-old, you know, that, that's pretty cool stuff. I mean, it was cool for me.
This is what I heard at my house. Do you know New Market had a Historical Society? Collins class went.
Yes.
So that was, there you go.
They have a perm machine from the 1930s that is terrifying to look at.
They had some very impressive things.
The kids were actually kind of horrified.
Oh, they were there.
The parents learned something, like it's.
I learned, and I've lived in New Market for 19 years.
Yes.
Langs Lane was called Port Town, Port Town Road. That was, that was my road. So I found that out. And I agreed.
I was waiting for that one.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and sharing this and the hard work over the summer.
So a couple of the Title I summer camp, Meredith was entrenched with three, four, and sometimes of students we identified as at-risk. So she paralleled a summer program that ran at the same time with these four students. Again, we tried to find as many kids to give them, and what we tried to do is successful learning. These are kids that are struggling, either identified through some Title I standards or kids are at risk. They don't qualify for special ed, they don't qualify for Title I, but they're at that risk of falling behind. We were able to identify four kids, and we sent letters out to, I believe, about 15 families, and four, four took advantage of it. Meredith ran that, did a very similar program, and oftentimes would be on the field trips or run some of her own. So again, we really serviced about 15 kids that we, we thought needed some service. And that whole concept was successful learning. And just walking through the elementary school, I noticed all those kids. There's a couple of kids that are now, their shoulders are up. They're walking through. They're proud. You could see it just in their demeanor, and I'm not saying it's awful this summer, but I think they found that the school is not as intimidating. They might not be at the level that they want to be, but they're getting there. So that, that definitely was an anecdotal thing that I observed just on the first couple of days of school. We take it to the junior, senior high school. We're in the eighth year of our Phillips Exeter Academy. We run it in-house now. Eight years ago, we partnered with Phillips Exeter. And they brought two teachers over, and we ran a gifted, basically, summer camp for those students who are our top tier. Again, we're not just pushing our lower levels, but what do we do for our top-tier kids? We had 22 students taking advantage of that. And these are students who are entering eighth grade or ninth grade. And they took humanities and math classes. Some took just one, some took both, and they were taught in-house. And we use the Harkness method, which is the Phillips Exeter method, where you don't sit in rows. You sit behind, you sit at a table, and the teacher just facilitates discussion. So there's activities that they need to do, but it's all self-learning. So that was another thing that ran, and those classes run for 15 minutes. They went for two weeks in July as well. So those are a couple of the major programs that we ran for students. In regards to teachers, we hosted a Google Boot Camp this summer. It's a Level One. We had two out of our, I think, two, at least two out of our four New Market teachers who were able to go for free because we hosted it onsite, took the Google Boot Camp test and now are certified as Level One instructors. So they've learned more about Google than any of us in this room will know. So that it's in-house support that we have for all of our teachers. We had one elementary school teacher and three at the junior, senior high school that took this class. But we had 28 educators from around the state of New Hampshire that came in for this two-day workshop. So we had a lot of the surrounding areas where we had people as far as London area coming here, and we're looking to host another one in March to get more of our staff involved. Because when we host it, we do get four spots for free. So it's a, it's a huge incentive as Google is something that we're using daily. The elementary school is going to Chromebooks and Google, so this is straight up our alley. We hosted a data summit at the junior, senior high school with Ms. Rossi, the school administration and the department heads at the junior, senior high school. We really dove into data. It's been a district goal for a number of years, but we're starting to get to that point where we want to know how data is going to improve our instruction. We know what our kids' test scores are, but what are we doing or not doing in regards to prepare them for our state test and all the different assessments we give them? So we dove into that, and we could see, we've got some gaps in areas, so we got to go back. And it was nice to have the department heads there. It was fantastic to have Amy there. She was just pulling up data. We were looking at different trends and ideas. And this is the first step, where we'll start giving it to our teachers so that they can do that. Because if a teacher just looks at the data, that's a step. To look at it and group our kids and talk about instruction, that's an even greater step. And that's, that's what we're looking for out of our teachers. So we started that this, this summer, and that went very well. People came out of that energized. It's definitely a theme that you'll be seeing a lot of our teachers talking about. It's definitely a theme that you'll be seeing a lot of our teachers talking about professional development this year. Then out of our Title II grant, we got another competitive grant that we applied for. And we had over thirty-one teachers from the junior, senior high school and the elementary school do curriculum work this summer. Thirty-one teachers. We had about forty apply, but we couldn't pay for all of them. So thirty-one qualified because we did another needs assessment of where we thought that we needed to go. And here's all the different activities that they worked on. So looking at spoken sequence for writing and phonics at the lower levels. We revamped our general music curriculum as that has really been enhanced by our number of kids over, over the couple of years. With chorus now becoming a full-time position, revamping that curriculum. As I said, the Google Classroom is something that a lot of teachers are using. We've had full-day kindergarten for a couple of years, but now we're looking at, hey, we were still doing some things as there was a half-day kindergarten. So we need to go back and revamp that so it met full-day kindergarten needs. Freshman Academy, how do we revamp that so that transitional time from kids going from eighth grade to ninth grade can be more of a beneficial time that they're prepared as they enter high school? Because it's, even though they're literally walking through a doorway to go from the eighth grade to the high school, it's a major transition. The data summit at the elementary school, Nancy Miller revamped the entire PE curriculum to meet, uh, core standards throughout their national standards. Fantastic work in that, in that regard. Math work throughout the district at different grade levels. Super Kids Training, which is, which is the reading program we're piloting right now is a program that we might, might take over next year. And then finally, Key Three Comprehension, which helps out with literacy strategy. So as you can see, we basically hit every discipline that you can think that we teach in, in Newmarket and looked at how that spoken sequence went from K to twelve. So that's, that's the work that happened this summer. And again, it was, it was our teachers and our staff, you know, dedicated like the people behind me that did this work. Any questions?
This is just using all this data that we've compiled over the few, the last five years, Amy, I think? You've been doing this?
Oh, you mean the data?
Yeah.
A little longer. Well, yeah, you've been in your role four years. So data, we have data going back from...
Oh, we have data going back many years ago.
Now we know what we do with it. Now we're actually utilizing it. This is what the whole process was started for, why her role was so important. Now we get to actually see it being utilized, which, utilize more is probably a better way of saying it.
Yeah, we're digging deeper and deeper at, at every level.
Thanks for bringing this to us, Chris. Because, you know, sometimes we sit here, week after week, and it's nice to have teachers and parents come in and talk about what's going on in the schools because that's, this is why we're here. And so I appreciate the passion from the teachers and you and Meredith being a part of this process, too. So I thank you guys very much for that. All right, moving back to our agenda. It's been a fun night so far. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine, if you'd like to do your report?
Do public comment?
Oh, I forgot public comment. I sure did, yes.
How's it's leaving?
Well, just because I forgot to offer it. We will open this floor to public comment. That's a public one, I apologize. Read my own notes better.
I always think to myself, I should really have something to say.
We will close public comments. Catherine, if you'd like to proceed with your report, we would appreciate it.
So at the elementary school, there was a PTA meeting last night. The garden club started today, which is always fun. And picture day is September thirteenth. At the high school, picture day is also September thirteenth. Open house is September twentieth at six p.m. And homecoming week starts Monday, September eighteen. All the information on it comes out tomorrow during advisory. For sports, girls soccer won their first three games of the season against Littleton, Moltenboro, and Farmington. Their next game is Saturday, September ninth, noon at Colebrook. And there is also a home game against Epping, September fourteenth, at five p.m. With boys soccer, they stand two to one, winning Littleton and Farmington. The next game is also September ninth at noon and also at Colebrook. And there's a game in Epping at four p.m. on September thirteenth. Football won their first game fifty-six to zero against Franklin. And their next game is home against Newfoundland, Saturday, September ninth, at two p.m. Cross country has had two meets so far, one at Guilford last week and one today at PCA. The girls place third and the boys place second. And the next is the homecoming meet Friday, which is at home, and it's the fifteenth at four p.m. And I think that's all the information for now.
Thank you very much.
Should we play at Colebrook? Isn't that like a three-hour drive?
Yes.
Yeah, cross country has to go very far sometimes, which is not that...
I think they have an advantage with sleeping there, don't they?
They come to us, too.
Do they?
Yes, so. And it's all done on a school bus, on a coach bus.
Meredith, do you have any...
We're very used to school buses.
To the calendar at all?
Um, just a couple other quick calendar notes. I would mention that the elementary open house is September fourteenth. And senior financial aid night is September thirteenth.
All right, Meredith, would you like to proceed with your reports?
Certainly.
So school opens.
Which is always exciting. We appreciate the support of our transportation company for a student and we are fortunate that they are adequately supplied with drivers and transportation went really well for us. We had one little route mix-up with an elementary bus on day one, but everyone got home safely and there were no major delays. So we're grateful for that. And since then, my understanding is it's been pretty smooth sailing. The Commissioner of Education is coming to visit the school district on October second. So a draft schedule for that will be forthcoming, but I'll be asking Catherine to maybe help coordinate some student visits with the Commissioner on that day. We'll be looking to have them visit the elementary school, trying to incorporate opportunities for parents and community members into that day as best we can as well.
And I really encourage our community members and our parents to come and meet this gentleman and give your opinion, please.
So it's a great opportunity for him to see our facilities, too. And on the facilities note, our building aid application was submitted to the state on September first. As a reminder, there remains a moratorium on state building aid, but in the event that that funding should be restored at any point, we want to make sure our application is there and ready and reviewed. We had a little bit of flooding in the weight room for the second consecutive year with the heavy rain that we sustained. That has been cleaned up. There's still some drying going on, but we're looking at some remediation options to prevent a recurrence of that moving forward. We also have a little bit of water below the window in the principal's office. So again, a couple of things that, you know, we know will be addressed long-term, but we want to make sure we're not sustaining any significant damage.
Well, that's been ongoing.
Yes, and that area is targeted for renovation. The weight room area specifically is not, but that's tied into a roof drain issue, we believe. So we're assessing how that particular piece fits into the construction project and whether or not we may need to do something separately. We do have a roof that did not fare well with last year's heavy winter. That is going to need to be replaced this year. It's one of our smaller roofs at the junior, senior high. It's probably about a forty-eight, forty-five thousand dollar expense, somewhere in that vicinity. So that's something we probably will try to target in the spring as we have a better sense of our finances. And we want to make sure we're in good shape through the heating season as well. But it's been, again, great to have Greg on board as the facilities director. Our, our, our full-time, you know, custodial supervisors have a lot on their plates on a day-to-day basis as school, school is open. So to have him be available to help line up the resources and make sure those pieces can be addressed will be very helpful to us. We talked last spring about the start time of the school day. And so unless the board has any objection, I'll be asking our assistant superintendent, Kristandreski, to head up a committee, including a mix of stakeholders to examine the options and the logistics of that. Again, we have a couple of neighbors who have gone down that road with a later start for the junior, senior high students this year in both Oyster River and Portsmouth. You know, there are a lot of variables to consider, from transportation to the impact of our students who attend the Seacoast School of Technology, to childcare and aftercare arrangements for parents. So there's a lot involved. It may or may not be something we're ready to act on quickly, but I think it behooves us to put that committee together and take a close look at it. And I, again, so the board has no objection.
Viewers interested should contact the office if they're interested.
Yes, we're certainly going to want parents or community members, school board members. We'll invite some students to participate in that process as well and faculty, of course. So if you are interested, you can let our office know and we'll make sure that information gets to Chris and we'll hopefully kick that off at some point in October. September, we like to make sure we get September under our belt first. Related to that, this year, as you know, our calendar has been set. I am doing a little bit of research still, but one thing that has been brought up is considering, certainly for next year, moving to an hours calendar rather than a days calendar, which is allowable under state law. Last year, when we finalized our calendar, the board was pretty clear that it's done a days calendar, it was sticking with a days calendar. We had a significant impact of snow days last year. We wound up waiving a student day that was not, is not required by law. But there are a couple of secondary gains around switching to an hours calendar. One is that we're allowed some more professional development time with our educators, which we think could be really beneficial.
Potentially a substantial amount more.
Potentially a substantial amount more. The other is, as we move into this construction period, potentially buying a little time at either end of, of the next two summers where we have a lot of, of work being done in our facilities. So we'll be bringing probably a calendar forward to you with an hours option. And if it's the board's pleasure to continue in that direction, we'll do that. And if it's not, we won't. And I may revisit that question this year for this school year. And I'll bring that forward at a future meeting if that's something that will be permissible with the DOA, I will bring it to the board for, for their consideration. There was a question at the last meeting about impact fees and I, we, I had shared the fund balance of our impact fees is about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, but I incorrectly stated that if we have until, I'm not sure what I said, but the reality is, we have to draw it down before June of two thousand and twenty-one or it goes back to taxpayers. So I just wanted to make sure I stated that clearly because I don't think I did. There was also a question at the last board meeting about the storage trailer that is behind the art building. So because we have such limited storage at this point, which is something we're hoping to address with the facilities project, we feel strongly that we're going to need it, at the very least, through the addition renovation time window. We will explore some alternative location options if we feel that we're going to need it after that. We hope that, well, we know that we'll have additional storage as a result of the project, but it, it has been extremely useful to us. In the board's packet were a couple of items. One was an indoor air quality checklist that Member Alberg asked for at the last meeting. So you have that. And that is the checklist required by the state. So we submit that on an annual basis. And we did one this fall as a baseline at our facilities and we'll be doing that a couple of times a year. And then there are other related pieces of that that we have to do on a more frequent intervals.
I was impressed with how comprehensive it is.
The other item in your packet was a memo from our facilities director, Marles. I mentioned at the last meeting that we had locked in oil prices for the upcoming year. In that memo, you'll see that we also locked in a propane rate, again, a shared bid with the town and electricity. And all of those are at prices below what we have paid in the past. So that's good news. On the emergency management front, we have a meeting with local police, fire, and the town administrator next Friday. Drills, obviously, and training are, are ongoing in our schools. But we hope this year to potentially do some larger-scale exercises with the town. And today, the town manager and I attended a, a joint training with Homeland Security in Portsmouth. So we are collaborating on, on that front. And again, as we move through the addition renovation proj, project, we may be needing to modify our plans through that, through that phasing. And I think that's all I can say because I'm out of breath. Oh, oh, now I forgot one thing. The CIP. So the capital improvements plan was due to the town capital improvement committee yesterday. It is, as you might expect, largely for us, it remains the bond itself. Also for consideration, and I think we've spoken about this before, but the junior, senior high bleachers for ADA access at some point will need to be replaced. So that is in the pipeline for consideration and the board will hear all of this again through the budget process. We're not expecting all of this to happen in any one year. Another piece that we would like to look at in the coming years is a pickup truck for the school department. Currently, if we have to move objects or items, our facilities, folks use their own vehicles, which for their own liability reasons and our liability reasons is, is really not best practice. We also use push-behind, walk-behind snow blowers and shovels to do some of the corners that the town plows can't get to. And so we'd like to have a plow attachment on that truck to help with a little bit of that snow cleanup. So that's on the pipeline. And the other item that we have incorporated in that list is that we have one other roof in the next two, three years that will likely need to be replaced that is not part of the building project. And again, we looked at that whole list of roofs and their timelines. And that one is about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar estimate. So in the next six years, those are, are the items that we see on the horizon. So no, no giant surprises for folks. And things like the vehicle, something that we could do on a lease purchase arrangement. So not everything has to happen at, at any given time, so.
And maybe even with a collaboration with the town, buy an old town vehicle.
Yeah, potentially.
You know, just because you're only going to use it truly maybe once or twice a week?
We could certainly get, have that conversation.
Yeah, that's the nice part about it. Point taken, all working together.
Absolutely. And yes, and there are other pieces of that relationship that will certainly, you know, benefit both sides. So now I'm really done.
Thank you, Meredith. The next item on our, our agenda is school board committee reports. Would you want to have any reports from any of the, the committee meetings that they've attended since we last met?
I did not attend the last facilities committee, meeting. I was out. Meredith did, I think.
I did. And Mr. Zink...
Who I failed to mention is on an excused absence tonight. So I apologize for that an hour into the meeting, but Mr. Catherine, school board member Zink is on an excused absence tonight, so.
But Mr. Zink facilitated that in your absence. We went over a few minor plan updates. Again, just some adjustments to move things like plumbing fixtures away from exterior walls in the locations, some of those kind of nitty-gritty details seem so long ago. Updates on where we stood with some civil engineering work and hazmat assessments. And so the committee will meet next Wednesday at five to review the full civil engineering breakout at this point, as well as mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, as well as the final report from a hazmat assess, from the hazardous assessments. And that's an all hazards assessment that, just part of the process. So it includes the known asbestos at the junior, senior high, PF OAs, is that what they're called? Thank you. All of those pieces were incorporated in that. And then we also had done scoping of our septic lines in the building. So, so all of that information will be shared at the next meeting on September thirteenth.
On here, it says it's at six o'clock. It's at five?
It is at five.
Okay, I will.
We are starting earlier because there's a lot covered.
Okay, because I had gone from this and I had relayed that time and said, "I told you it was five, but the print says it's six." Okay, no, no, I'll go back and...
One of the things that I noticed when I was up in the SAU office the other week is that there's some updated renderings and things. is that there's some updated renderings and things. If we could get those up onto the building website, I think the town might look to see them, if that's something that we can do.
So I believe that my administrative assistant is in the process of doing that. Those files were shared by the architectural firm, so I think she's working on getting that to happen.
They're kind of neat.
Yeah, for the first time, we began some preliminary conversations about what the interior design might look like. So, for example, one of the potentials that they're looking at is as we open up what is now the band room area where our stage is, and that becomes our cafetorium, right? We're going to be expanding that stage and making that our, both our cafeteria and our theater, but there are old wooden beams above that ceiling, so if we could expose those beams and be able to view them in the building, it would sort of feature the beauty of that, the building that we have, but also just be really welcoming and warm, I think, so.
And I think it's neat, because there's a picture up there of the gym, and it's the old band room, which was Jim Pryor, with the beam showing, and it sort of harkens back to the history of the building, too, which is so important to the town, so it's neat. Any other committee reports from anyone?
Just a quick note, that the SST meeting was, golly, we can have it ten days ago, and they are looking at some concerns that the YMCA is wanting to expand their facilities at another gymnasium that is in a parking area, so they're concerned and would like the support of the supporting, or the school districts that send students there, and addressing that with the zoning committee in Exeter. So I will bring that to the next meeting, I believe.
Perfect. Anything else from anyone? All right, we'll proceed with the next thing. Meredith, would you like to review the financial report with us?
Yes, so our MS-25 was due to the state at the end of August, and so, or technically September first, and so we had reviewed that with the budget committee, and school board members saw it at our meeting last week, our joint meeting. But just to go over this a little bit, as you may remember, the board voted in June to withhold approximately three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars from fund balance, the two and a half percent of the prior year budget, and that had been approved in a prior year on a warrant article by voters. So aside from that, we are, as you can see at the bottom of page one, assigned, unassigned fund balance, line thirty-five, we are returning six hundred thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars to taxpayers. Why such a large number? Well, just as a reminder, we got five hundred and forty thousand dollars from that state emergency building aid back last year, and we also received about a hundred thousand more in revenue than we projected from a combination of Medicaid and catastrophic aid. So had those two things not happened, the total fund balance for us would have been right around the two percent of our operating budget, between one and a half and two percent. And really, you want to make sure at the end of a year, you shoot to have a fund balance of one to two percent of your operating budget. Otherwise, you're running way too lean, and it puts you at significant risk. So that's the general rule of thumb we strive for, and we were pretty right on with that target last year.
So that means that that will show up when people get the tax bills in December as a reduced school portion on the taxes?
Well, an overall, overall reduction in the taxes, but that money goes back to taxpayers and offsets the funds that need to be raised for the following year's tax. Those tax bills, remember, come out in December, and they do have the first payment towards the bond, the interest-only payment that will occur, so that first piece will hit taxpayers in the December bill. Yeah. I think that's all I have, but happy to answer any questions I can, or send any back to Lisa.
Anyone have any questions? Again, I am grateful for the financial input from Lisa, who is not here tonight, and Meredith, for keeping us abreast of things that are happening with the budgets and reporting things on time for other regulations. I appreciate that greatly. And I'm sure if people have questions, we can pass them along to you and Lisa to be addressed at the next meeting as well, if there aren't any now. Moving along, we are in our action items, and the first thing that we are going to address is the minutes from the June fifteenth meeting. We had to defer those from last time because there were three of us here and I was not present at that meeting. So if you all could, I seek a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion from Ms. McKinney, and a second from Mr. Kennison, to approve the minutes of the June fifteenth, public and non-public meeting minutes. Not well said at all. I will say that again, there's a motion on the floor from Mr. Kennison, and with a second of Ms. McKinney, to approve the public and non-public minutes from the June fifteenth meetings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye abstained. The next item for approval is the August twenty-fourth minutes, and as Mr. Zink is not here, and there are only three of us, we're going to have to defer those to our next meeting. So that will be that. The next thing is the approval of the manifest. Ms. McKinney, will you do the manifest for us?
Oh.
Thank you.
Or Ms. Alberg?
Or Ms. Alberg can.
Oh, I'll, okay. I move to accept the manifest for September seventh, twenty seventeen, for one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, fifty-five dollars and fifty-six cents.
I'll second that.
And a motion from Ms. McKinney, we have a motion to, for Ms. McKinney, with a second of Ms. Alberg, I'm missing this one, to approve the manifests as noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. The next item was the approval of the employee handbook, which is not in our folders, which I'm assuming we will address at the twenty-first meeting.
That's correct. We moved that to the twenty-first in hopes that Ms. Ambrosio might be able to be here as well for that to answer any questions.
Perfect. The last two items on the agenda are two personnel matters. The first one is a leave request that we discussed in our non-public meeting before this meeting. I seek a motion to approve that leave request.
So moved.
Second.
On a motion from Ms. Alberg, and a second from Ms. McKinney, we are voting to approve the leave request as requested in the non-public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
And I just want to note that that is pursuant to the teachers' collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you. The next item is the teacher nomination. Meredith, would you like to talk about that nomination first, or should we have the motion and discuss it?
I'm happy to talk about it first, if that is helpful. We are nominating to you tonight, I think I indicated at the last meeting that we hope to have that nomination for you tonight, but nominating David Tong for the position of the high school chemistry. That position is currently filled by a long-term sub. We hope that Mr. Tong will be on board with us in the next couple of weeks, and we're going to work out a nice transition with our long-term substitute for that to take place.
Excellent. I seek a motion to approve the nomination as described by Meredith right now.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Ms. McKinney, and a second by Mr. Kennison, to approve the teacher nomination presented by Meredith. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. The last couple of things, just a few updates on our meetings. Our next regular school board meeting is two weeks from tonight, September twenty-first, at seven, in the town council chambers. The building committee meeting, as was noted earlier, is on the thirteenth at five p.m. will be televised as well, in the auditorium downstairs.
Yes, again, civil engineering, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing reports, hazardous assessment, and line scoping results. And I just want to say, the meeting on September twenty-first, just as a reminder, all of those policies that we reviewed at the August twenty-fourth meeting will be slated for the vote on that at the meeting on September twenty-first, so if there are any changes to those, to please get them to me by the middle of next week.
Excellent. If there is nothing else, I seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion from Mr. Kennison, with a second from Ms. McKinney. We're voting to adjourn the meeting. I cannot say anything tonight. All those in favor adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at eight oh three.